Ready to go, Mr. Housher?
Sure.
Okay. Let's go ahead and call a meeting to order. It is Tuesday, November 14th, 2017. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of reports received and filed.
I have October 2017 Treasuries Reconciliation Report filed and October 2017 plan being filed.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Board of Realtors Political and Economic Responsibility Commission meeting today, or committee meeting, Planning Commission meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Capitol Avenue ribbon cutting tomorrow. Campo Board of Directors tomorrow. The Health Department Chili Cook Off Thursday. Chamber Connection Thursday night. Leadership Meeting Friday morning. And then our MAC Conference Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Prayer Breakfast Wednesday.
Yeah, we got a meeting that morning, too.
Yep, we do.
We've got a Road and Bridge Advisory Board meeting on Thursday. And then the DevNet software demo is all day Thursday, starting at nine.
All day?
Yep. I missed you yesterday. Clear Basin was only three and a half hours.
Yeah. Sorry I missed that. I probably won't go through the DevNet one either, since I missed that one. I don't think it's fair to sit through one and not the other.
Well, we're relying on Larry to...
They're gonna seriously have you all day.
Yeah.
For what?
Nine to four. Wasn't that right, Larry?
I think so.
I tell them longer they talk, the lesser chance they have.
So I'm gonna go to both meetings, and then I'm gonna abstain and let you guys vote on it.
Be nice on my taxes.
Well, he only collects it.
I know, I know, but I haven't received them yet. Maybe he can...
So he'll charge you the penalties, and after his crystal just assess your property really high.
That's true. Sorry, Larry.
Glad this is all I take.
Is that all you've got?
That's all I've got.
Okay. Yeah, I've got USS Missouri Commissioning Committee meeting tomorrow at eight. Capitol Avenue, but I got Reggie Turnbull to visitation. Capital Region Workforce in the afternoon. Thursday, I got Legends Bank, no, Reggie's Thursday, Legends Bank. Health Department, which I'm probably not gonna make, because I gotta go to the funeral. Friday, Leadership Forum, and then Christie and I are gonna speak at the Cosmopolitan Club. And Saturday, we're doing a K-WAS program from eight to nine, how I do lease at my store. Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, we're at the lake. The prayer breakfast is the 22nd before our commission meeting, so Carrie and I are gonna be the greeters and welcome everybody. I think you're serving. Are you serving?
I believe, yeah.
Okay. And that's all I've got. Busy week. Commission comments? I'm gonna move Mark Richardson up before you, Eric. Sorry about that.
That's fine.
You know, he's gotta be somewhere, but he had sent me this down lawyer's... Look at all the pages. But he has grants for two victim advocates awarded Cole County through MAPPA-VOCA grant, so...
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Bushman. And commissioners, this is another, in addition to a grant that we received, and you all approved an employee under the grant last year or the year before, I think last year. And this is under the same grant funding, where our county was selected based upon the numbers of victims that we serve, and a feeling that we qualified to get another victim advocate. This is funded by federal criminal defendants that pay into a fund to go to victim services. And Cole County's been awarded that grant if the commission approves it for hiring a person under the grant. And if you all do that, that person will be hired with understanding that their employment is dependent upon the grant being renewed. And so it's a limited hiring, so long as the grant would be approved, if you all approve it. And that's what I'm asking you to do.
This is for two, and...
This is for two.
Before it was one.
We have one now, under the grant, that's been working this past year, and has enabled us to serve all victims of crime, whereas, you know, we have had in the past, and now also the RACs service, but that only serves certain victims of crimes. And it has been wonderful to have one so far that's able to do all, but the workload is, as I say, the numbers that they analyzed, found that we qualified, I think in the top three or four counties, for a second one that had applied. So it would help, and it would help to serve victims who, especially some of the trends, and I don't know for Cole County specifically, but nationwide violent crime and dangerous crime has increased two years in a row, the first two times since, I believe, the late 70s or early 80s. And so it's important, I think, that we continue to work in every way we can to help serve the victims and help them through the criminal process.
That doesn't cost us anything.
Does not, no. Sure does not. And, but it helps our victims here in Cole County quite a bit.
So the award covers all the benefits as well?
Yes, sir. It's set out in the letter, a letter dated October 18th, from the Missouri Association of Prosecuting Attorneys, that sets out all of the personnel expenses, the benefits, the equipment provided, and training, and travel, and supplies for operations. So that letter sets all of those out, and then it's a reimbursement, where each month we send in and submit for reimbursement.
So does it lay out the pay that's for this person, or...
Yes, it lays it out that it's a second, the new position would be a salary up to $36,000 And that's in under Personnel Line Item, capital B, for the second position.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
So you need a motion to approve or to accept the grant, or what do you need, Mark?
I think so, if you all will do that.
And so we're just adding one victim advocate, basically?
Correct. We have an existing one under the grant, so we're adding this new, it'll be a new position under the grant.
Okay. I move that we accept the MAPPA-VOCA grant to add one victim advocate.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a nice day. Thanks.
Do you need a copy, Lynn? I've got one on my desk.
Okay, just so I have one for the minutes.
Yeah. I didn't bring it in this morning.
We need to make a motion to sign it, then.
Yeah. Hey, Mark?
An acceptance letter?
It's right here, and it's got Mark's.
Oh.
I guess you'll just sign it and send it.
Probably have Sam sign it, though, too, shouldn't we?
I guess. MAPPA services. Hey, Mark, you want Sam to sign this, too? I know it's got MAPPA in your, this spot for you.
Okay, sure. I think it'd be good both to sign it.
Okay.
They won't have any, so we're not signing it.
There's yours, and then Sam, you can just sign under it.
Okay.
Make a motion to sign it, too.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Well, you need that one back.
I have to send one, too. I have to send one in.
So you have not many? You'll have this one back and send it?
That would be great.
We just signed it, the other original, then some other original.
Yes.
And then Lynn will just scan.
I will do that.
And we need a Steve signing and all that. Both of them.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, actually, Mark can get it to MAPPA to sign.
I move that we sign the MAPPA-VOCA grant.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I guess. I thought we done did that.
We accepted it. We didn't vote to sign it.
Yeah.
Leave for about 10 seconds.
Yeah.
That'll teach ya.
See how it's gonna be.
Bids and contracts. Contract award, the Crossroads, South Town Estates, Rustic Oaks Subdivision, Stormwater and Street Improvements Project.
Okay, we got a pretty sizable project that we bid back on October 20th. Largest stormwater project that we've done. Eight, all combined is one. And five bidders, the low bid was Rad A Baker Construction, in the amount of $1,986,243.1 slightly under the estimate. There was quite a bit of difference between them and the next low, by about a little more than $250,000. Having not done work with this company in the past, we did a pretty extensive check of some references. Pretty, he provided a pretty diverse project list, and we talked to several, and most of the comments came back positive. Just so you know, there was one project they had some issues with, and my last contact was with the city administrator of that community, and he said, he confirmed that, yeah, they did have a few problems, but the end project was good, and he's very happy with the end result. So I think with any, with any of this type of work, you're gonna run into some problems here and there. But just wanted to let you all know that we did encounter that, but for the most part, everything came back positive. Checked multiple different types of projects. City engineers, public work side, and then also the engineer side. And like I said, most, majority of the comments were positive. And just given that fact, and the fact that we do have quite a bit of work coming up next year, stormwater-wise, got a lot of things to bid, and we need contractors that are out there willing to bid our work and provide good bids, and we can learn to work with. So it is, it is a new contractor to us, but some of the employees are familiar with this area, especially their foreman on the project. He's, was with another company in town, and we've done work with him in the past, and very comfortable, we would be very comfortable working with him. So, given all that, like I said, we did pretty extensive check on everything, and based on everything that we found, we would recommend award to Rad A Baker Construction in that amount that I listed or mentioned previously, $1,986,243.1. Is there any questions?
Do they get their projects done in a timely fashion?
Um...
Yeah.
That's...
Part of the bet was kinda left to bed.
Yeah, I know.
Taste in my mouth.
Everything that I checked, yes, they do.
Okay.
There, with any project, there's always a chance that you could run into problems. We've, we've had projects go over with companies that we're familiar with, ones that we're not. It's, there's no rhyme or reason to what can happen on a job. The design plans are fairly, you know, very thorough, and I don't think we'll find any real surprises on anything. Like I said, it's just a pretty good-sized job, but it's all compact in one area. There's a lot of subcontract, I say not a lot, a sizable amount, a dollar amount of subcontract work, primarily with asphalt, since we're already doing the streets completely. And he also does have another sub-mentioned local company doing some earthwork for him. So...
So, just a couple things jump out at me. Eric, so the first, first three items there, I mean, obviously, item number two, you know, fairly close there, but items one and three is just a lot of discrepancy there, and I realize that his mobilization is higher, too, but some of those really are pretty drastic.
I'll take the easy one first. Mobilization, I did, I specifically talked to him about that, because that one surprised me, too. And he said, and I totally understand where he's coming from, when he, he's, he doesn't have any estimator or anybody working for him, he does all this himself. Fairly low overhead company, just him and his wife, operating the business side of it. He figures all his overhead profit in his mobilization price, rather than tack it on to each individual bid item, which, the way we look at it, that's probably to our benefit, because a mobilization is a lump sum item, it's not gonna go over. Whereas you could have overages on the other line items that are unit, unit bid price. So that was the reason for that. The three top items, I was pretty surprised as well. If you look at the engineer's estimate, they are even half of that, but then if you compare them to the other bid prices, they're, they're quite a bit lower. But if you look at the next low, and then you compare the fourth and fifth bids, you know, they're really not too terribly off from those. It's just, it's just in the way that they look at it, and how they bid it. I personally didn't see that much, you know, earthwork, grading work. The way, the way we define bid items, curb and gutter work, I'm sorry, not curb and gutter, but all the pipe work, the excavation required for that is included in that line item, not as a separate earthwork item. So really, the earthwork would just be grading, finishing of yard areas in which you've done curb and gutter work, and then any kind of miscellaneous grading of yards for shaping for drainage and things like that. So we didn't really see as much as some of the contractors did. So, like I said, it's one that does kinda jump out at you, but it is a lump sum item.
Right.
You know, it's not gonna go over. That's, that is what it is, so... Some companies...
That one's, that one's a big one. I mean, of course, the removal improvements is kind of a big one, too, just looking at some of the other unit prices there, and of course, you know, some of them there are a little bit low on removals, or pretty high on earthwork, so.
Yeah.
Just trying to...
Yeah.
Look at that a little bit. I mean, you know, obviously, some people will be lower on one item and higher on another, and so, but he's low on both. So, but, I mean, I'm okay with it, I just wanted to make sure that I knew what we were, we were talking about.
Yeah, we, I visited with him before I even called any references. I brought him and the foreman in, and we talked for about an hour, hour and a half, and specifically about those, and, yeah, he just, you know, that's just what he bid it, and he's figuring in some of that earthwork in some of the other items, even though they, some of them are a little bit lower than others, but, I don't know, you see this when you get that many bids, you see all across the board, and there's just no rhyme or reason sometimes to some of what they come up with.
Yeah, I talked to Eric about it as well, and he did some extensive research on it to just verify things, and one of the areas we were concerned about was the subgrade stabilization, and their bid is quite a bit higher on it, and I guess on a couple of the last few projects, we've gone over on some of those, but even going over, you'd have to go over by a lot to make up the difference in the pricing. I mean, it's about a quarter million dollars, so you wanna continue to encourage these new contractors to bid these, so it just makes them more competitive, and hopefully saves us money. And then they do have local ties, I think that helps.
Yeah.
I mean, I do wanna put some value on our local contractors and stuff, but that's a big chunk to try to make up. So I think you did a good job going through it, and being very thorough with it, Eric, so I know we had some questions and stuff we threw at you, and a few more than we do on, on other ones, so we'll have an inspector there the whole time, so watching it, making sure everything's up to par.
It is within walking distance of our office, so we'll probably have more than one. Have one on site, and then we'll have a lot of drive-bys, I'm sure, so we'll be watching it real close.
Yep, you did your homework on it, so...
Yep.
Am they ready to get going?
Yeah, he's, he talked, he's ready to start whenever, as soon as we can. They'll, they'll work over the winter, barring any real bad weather, I think they can do a lot of the pipe work during the winter, that'll help them out a lot, as far as having a head start when spring hits.
Time frame?
Completion date, the exact date escapes me right now, but it's the third Friday of November next year. I can actually tell you.
Now, for some reason, they were to go past that. Have we eliminated the, the winter, winter clause in there?
I'm glad you asked that. I guess we did.
We did?
Yeah.
So every day past that will be liquidated damages?
Mm-hmm.
That's good?
Mm-hmm.
Contract?
Yep.
Should we review the contract?
No, but it's Eric's standard, so he's quit giving them to me.
Walk with no crutch or anything, man.
So if something happens, it's on you.
So I sneak something in, huh?
I think you got a raise in there.
It's a normal contract.
I move that we award and sign the contract for the Crossroads, South Town Estates, and Rustic Oaks Subdivision, Stormwater and Street Improvements to Rad A Baker Construction.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We probably need to go through them contracts, anyway, 'cause even like our personnel, our employee handbook, we recently found something in there that shouldn't have been in there, we should've addressed a long time ago, so it's stuff that we can, you know, maybe you don't see it the first 600 times, but the 600 first time, we might find something. Because if you said you took stuff out from the last time, then it's not a standard contract. We've had the winter stuff in there every time before.
That's, that's in the jobs special provisions, that we have a not actual, actual contract document.
That would probably be part of the contract, though, if that's gonna be referred to in the contract, right?
Uh, I mean, the contract itself, it lists the, the items that are part of the contract documents, which list basically every part of the, the whole bidding documents.
I'm just saying, I don't cover my backside.
What you're actually signing is the actual document itself, which references things that go into it. So, I mean, your question about reviewing the contract and some of the specifics like that, yeah, I agree. That probably wouldn't hurt to go through that with Jill and see if there's anything we need to update.
Because there could be stuff on there. Like I said, with the employee handbook, that one came up, it's been that way for ever.
Mm-hmm.
And it just, you know, came to light, so if we catch something, you never know.
I'll, that's a good comment, Jeff, I appreciate that, and I'll work with Jill, and I'll send her, specifically our instruction to bidders, some things in there might need some updating. So, yeah, we'll work on that.
But the, so just to go back to the, to the winter clause that we had in there, that was kind of our standard, Cole County standards of construction, typically like MoDOT would have, and so we just removed that from, from our Cole County standards.
Our specifications are MoDOT's. We just, with the jobs special provisions, is where we change it to meet what we need on our project. But, yes, it's the same one that MoDOT uses.
Okay. But that will be, that won't come into play in any future projects, it's just gone.
We'll have to make sure we include it in the jobs special provisions.
Okay.
I mean, if it's something we wanna add to the actual contract language itself...
So...
We could probably do that. I, what you're saying is, that, this thing right here, what you guys sign, basically, when, when the contractor, you sign it, you're agreeing to every little thing in the whole bidding documents, everything combined.
Right.
Okay? We just have to remember on our end, to make sure we include that provision on the liquidated damages.
Right.
Problem is, sometimes I use jobs from previous, you know, previous contracts and documents from other jobs.
Right.
We'll just have to remember on our end, to make sure we add that to each one going forward. So...
Right. My concern is that as we approach jobs with fall completion dates, you know, that completion date extends, or we add additional work, I get that, I'll, I'll add additional days, but I don't wanna get to that December 15th, and all of a sudden hit this winter stuff, where they don't get penalized for not completing it. So, I mean, they need to understand that this job has to be done before winter, even if we throw additional work at you, and if you don't complete it, you know, then we're gonna penalize you.
Yep.
So, I just, I don't wanna get into that, and that was like a 90 or 120-day window of winter work.
Mm-hmm.
So, that, that's just my concern. I mean, obviously, if the job ends in August, hopefully, we don't get to December, but, you know, when we, when we have completion dates towards the end of November, that concern I mean.
Yeah. It's always a concern.
I think you hit it on the head, that they need to understand it as well, not that we're just slipping it in there, because it is different than any other contract than they probably have done with anybody else, and, I mean, I don't like surprises, so, you know, if they get, they're getting done thinking they got time to work with because they had inclement weather, and then all of a sudden, we're going, no, you all got penalties to be paid, where was that at? As in a little tiny writing there on page 724. So, I mean, that's one of the things that we changed. You said standard contractors, probably no such thing, standard contractors, so they all got holes in them.
Yeah, I, I agree with you all, and I'll talk to Jill, and we'll figure out where the best place to reference that is, that it's recognizable.
Send him an email, even tell him, make sure he realizes that, that we're not paying for that. He's gonna be working during the winter.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Well, the thing is that he's working to get it done, so even with extras that he's done by the completion date, or he's done within, you know, an extended completion date, but idea would be to get done early, so you can get it all done on time.
That would work out.
Yeah.
Most contractors like that.
Yeah.
You get a few here and there, but, like I said, I think we're fine on this.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. You wanna do Charm Villa here, too?
Uh, yeah.
Since we got it.
Yeah. Change order approval, Charm Villa Stormwater Improvements Project.
I mentioned it, 17th.
We're gonna go ahead and do Charm.
Go on to the next one?
Yep, yep, yep.
The next item I have is the, the final closeout change order on the Charm Villa Subdivision Stormwater Improvements Project. The project actually went very well. We did add quite a bit of curb and gutter work, and the reason why we added it is, next year, we're gonna come in and do an overlay of those streets through there, full depth, and there was quite a bit of curb that needed to be replaced, and we determined that it'd be better to do it now, rather than have to deal with it next year when we come in and be ready to overlay, because normally, that would be done by our crews, and it's always becomes a, you know, coordination issue, trying to get all that stuff done in advance of the overlay. So we added quite a bit of curb and gutter to the project. That, in turn, added some driveway and driveway approach work that is incidental to that. And so the base contract was, was $80,955. The total change order, all the items added together, added $26,575 for a final closeout dollar amount of $107,475.55, and I'd recommend approval of that. And it's with Maric Escobade. Any questions?
I've looked at both jobs, and they turned out really well. Thought he did a good job. Have we, where are we at on finalizing the asphalt?
Larry Bishop was working with Jefferson Asphalt on that, and it was either gonna be, if everything worked out right, it was gonna be the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, before Thanksgiving, I think either the Monday or Tuesday, but there's a chance that that could get pushed into the next week, so it's...
That in turn added some driveway and driveway approach work that is incidental to that. And so, the, um, base contract was, was $80,955. The, um, total change order, all the items added together, added $26,575 for a final closeout, um, dollar amount of $107,475.55, and I'd recommend approval of that. And it's with Mara excavating. Any questions?
I've looked at both jobs and they turned out really well, thought he did a good job. Have we, uh, where are we at on finalizing the asphalt?
Larry Bishop was working with Jefferson Asphalt on that, and it was either gonna be, if, if everything worked out right, it was gonna be the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I think neither the Monday or Tuesday, but there's a chance that that can get pushed into the next week. So, it's, it's coming, it's just a matter of getting it done.
Before they shut down the asphalt?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's in the works. Yeah, it'll, it'll get done, yeah.
Okay.
And it's more or less kind of a, a patch job, especially on the charm, because we are gonna come in and do the full depth next year on Shear, the next one. It's just a full, you know, just the area, it'll be a little more of a permanent situation there. And Shear, just so you know, it did, actually came in a little bit under the contract amount. Not a whole lot, but it did come in a little bit under, so.
So you're just gonna do some wedging and stuff there on Charm Villa? Just kind of fill in the, the spots, and then you'll come back and mill and overlay next year?
Yeah, just get it in decent enough condition to make it through next year, but not spend a whole bunch of money on it now.
Any questions?
No.
I move that we approve the final change order for Charm Villa Drive with Mara excavating.
We do have a sit there document to sign.
Okay. Oh, hang on, let me, let me withdraw that. You wanna close the job out?
Yeah.
All right, I move that we approve and sign the change order number one and final closeout for Charm Villa subdivision stormwater improvements project with Mara excavating.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go back. Do we have any unfinished business? New business accounts payable review?
I'd ask for two whole accounts payable penny review.
I move that we approve accounts payable penny review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The prosecutor attorney, Kristen, delivery of auditor's proposed budget for 2018.
Okay, you guys should all have a book in front of you, if anybody doesn't have one, Daniel has copies. We're very pleased to present the proposed budget for fiscal year 2018 for Cole County. As required by statute, this budget document is a complete financial plan for the county as a whole, and we've made every effort to make sure that we recommend a budget that provides adequate funding for the services of the county and while maintaining a sound financial position. I'm just quickly gonna run through the budget message tables, kind of explain to you. They give an overview of the budget different ways. I know after this, we have meetings with each department, and we'll get more in-depth in the, into the budget, but you guys ask me any questions as we go along? Table one, which is on Roman numeral five. This is a budget-to-budget comparison. It takes the 2017 budget and compares it to 2018 countywide. Some of the highlights is total financial resources available for expenditures is slightly over 75 million. Total planned basic operating expenditures is 51.7 million. There's 14.2 million in infrastructure and capital expenditures. There's 14.8 million in public safety, which includes law enforcement. There is a salary adjustment of 1% for employees given as a COLA, and the county will also continue to cover health and dental insurance along with retirement, which we currently receive. Reserves as a percent of total revenue in all major funds are at or above the 10% to 15% level, which we expect, except for the sales tax fund. And that's just mainly due to projects that take longer than a year. The next table, table two, is on page seven. This takes the total budget and breaks it down into the five major funds. You can see better the transfers between funds on this table, the other financial sources that flow in and out. You can see those going in and out of those major funds. Table three and table four, which is on page nine and page 10, it takes the expenditures countywide and takes them by resource, so personnel, supplies, capital outlay. And then, um, table four goes through and does it by function. So you can see general government versus health and welfare, public safety, highway, streets and bridges. After that, on page 12, is table five, and here we start looking at the individual major funds. So table five is just general fund. If you look at the budget for 17 versus the budget for 18 for general fund, you can see that our total basic revenue is actually down for the year. We are facing a tighter budget this year than we have in the past. Table six, on page 13, is the law enforcement fund. And here you can still see the transfer in from the general fund. In the next couple of funds, so law enforcement, EMS and sales tax. Our sales tax for this year compared to last year is only up about $55,000 so far this year. So we're projecting our sales tax to be flat. Our sales tax has been down the last three months, so that number could change in the next two months, or next month and a half, until we get to the end of the year. So that's one to keep an eye on, especially in the law enforcement fund and the EMS fund. Emergency medical services fund is on page 14. This one, we combine together the sales tax and the enterprise fund into one table so that you can see that service together. You will notice in this one that the personnel and supplies and materials costs have both gone up while the capital outlay expense has gone down. We did quite a bit of capital projects, um, purchasing a new CAD and a new dispatch and things like that in 17. We don't expect to do those projects again in 18, so that cost is going down. The last table on page 15 is our projected ending reserves. This one is probably the best one to look at, 'cause it's a snapshot of where we started with reserves and where we're gonna end up. The operating surplus, operating surplus or deficit line, most of those are planned expenditures by the county. We plan to spend down reserves in the general fund with the purchase of the Health Department building. So of that 1.6, 1.5 is set aside for that purchase. It is a planned spend down of expenditures, or of reserves. Road and bridge and sales tax, those again are, um, infrastructure mainly. They're projects that cover multiple years. A lot of equipment purchases in road and bridge, one-time purchases that we plan to spend down those reserves with. In the other funds that you see there, most of those are the smaller funds that are controlled by other elected officials. They're not required to keep a contingency, so everything that is available in those funds is available to spend. You'll see that, um, in there, if you look at their total projected ending reserve is, um, almost as much as their total operating revenue. So they're carrying forward quite a bit, but we have to budget them to spend that also. The biggest change that you can see when looking at the total budget is in the sales tax fund, capital improvement sales tax. We have the project you guys approved this morning for Crossroads, South Town, Rustic Oaks, for almost 2 million. They also have Meadow Brook Estates, which is coming, which is another 1.6. We have 1.6 in cooperative projects. So, um, this year was kind of a design year for them. They didn't spend a lot of construction money. Next year's gonna be a big expenditure year for them. So that's why that 5.2 million in operating deficit, it's because we've been building up to do these large projects. Any questions?
So you said, uh, just to touch base on the, uh, the 5.2 million out of the sales tax. Meadow Brook Estates will be probably a next fall project, so obviously, I don't know that that'll be started, but the 1.6 you mentioned on the cooperative projects, really, we're only 800,000 in that.
Right, so, um, Eric kind of goes through and, and things that we're gonna sign contracts for or we expect to be moving through the process are budgeted. So, and there is a railroad spur project, the High Street project, things that he sees on the horizon, he starts to build into, into the budget.
Okay. So even though some of those are partial, he's doing design work and other things for other projects?
Right, and as soon as we sign those contracts, we have to encumber the money. So they're included in the budget and the full cost that we expect. One other page to kind of look at is, um, page 112 in front of the capital improvement, um, sales tax budget. There is a list of capital requests that we've received. Some of those get included in their general fund request, but we pull them out because they could be a capital purchase and put them on here for you all to see. This year, a little bit different, is we've kind of done the same thing with EMS, law enforcement and public works. So in front of each of their budgets, you'll also see capital items that they've requested. The difference is, is that theirs get included in their budget, because they have a separate line for those capital items, but we wanted to list them out so that you could see what they were.
And they're in their budget, in our different sections of their budget?
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
That it?
That's it, unless you guys have anything else now. I know that there are meetings scheduled already, Debbie will get out a list.
They're on the 5th, Department has already scheduled. So from now till then, they'll review their budget, and then they'll come to that meeting and give her a hard time.
And there were a lot of changes, things that got cut out of the budget, so lots of things to talk about.
So obviously, I'll have more questions, but just the one question. Personnel services across all funds, page seven. The 20 million, 146 included the, I'm looking at our personnel services.
Yep.
20 million, 146, that included all the 1%?
That includes the 1%. There were new, no new employees added other than five in the EMS department to cover the change and the shifts that will happen in January.
Those are included?
Yes, they are included, but no other new positions are included.
Okay. Wheeler said he wasn't asking for new positions in 18, right?
That didn't stop him from asking for one in 17.
Oh, yeah, but.
He might, he's still got time, too, he's got two more months. A month and a half.
Well, yeah, but he said he wouldn't.
For 18, he may still ask for one in 17.
Yeah.
Nothing else?
Huh?
Nothing else now?
No, nothing else yet. I'll do my reading and grill you at MAC.
Yeah, that's usually where, it's better to talk to you a little bit at MAC. Get your crystal ball out.
I have no crystal ball. That's right, that's right.
That's a lot of red, red marks will be on them, mark some stuff off.
We.
Paid too much this last year, we gotta start cutting back.
There are a few fees that are down this year. The recorders' fees, which we don't really have a lot of control over, public administrators' fees. Some of our residential and juvenile are down from last year. We're kind of keeping an eye on those to see if they turn around closer to the end of the year. When we cut the budget off and, and start really getting into the numbers, there's still time left from now until the end of the year for things to turn around. So our projections could change.
Okay, so in a nutshell, 82 million?
82 is total financial sources, so that includes reserves, transfers and all the.
And then compared to 17, it was?
So a lot.
78?
Yeah, so, um, some of that is reserves, so you see the reserves went from 28 to 31. Other than that, if you look at, like, total taxes, um.
Which table are you looking at to compare?
Table one on page five.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out exactly which one, there's more apples to apples.
It's total budget, so that one includes every fund, every department, all together into one table.
So the $4 million increase is more due to reserves?
Uh, some of it, yes.
Okay, you started saying some numbers, and I was still trying to find that table. How much of his reserves, what line do I need to look at?
If you look at, um, beginning reserve at the top, in 2017, our beginning reserve was 28 million.
Are we still on the same table?
Yep. Yep, beginning reserve, yep. Right under total revenue.
Yeah, you said top, that's middle. So top of the pages. Okay, I was reading every one of them, took a minute to get there. Okay, so 31, 28.
28 to 31.
Three and a half million?
I mean, that's the biggest change there, that you're seeing in that 82 to 78 figure, is the reserves carried forward.
Okay, so we have a million increase probably then, other than the reserves?
Yeah, about.
Thereabouts, just around the number.
Thereabouts, yes.
So then what's a, basically, what's it for a 1% increase for the employees? Is that half a million, basically, a year?
No.
Quarter? 20 million?
I don't have the number right off the top of my head. I know in general fund.
We always had a general idea what it was, though.
I don't have it in total.
Well, if you take.
Just a guesstimate, though.
Take your annualized personnel services and.
Well, so that personnel service, though, includes all the benefits. So that includes health insurance, retirement, social security.
So you take that, you take 40% out of it roughly?
Right, right, take 40% out of there and then whatever that is.
I thought we always had some kind of number that we.
I know in general fund, the cost is about 62,000 for general fund employees. I don't have each individual fund in a total dollar figure right off the top of my head.
I don't need it exact, you got a guesstimate?
450.
So about half a million?
Yep.
Okay, so that's what the number I was just kinda using for.
I'd say that's a little high, but.
That's fine, I'd rather be on the high end and then it comes in less.
I mean, if you take the 750, which is a difference in the annualized versus what you have there.
And that's with everybody.
Right.
Including elected officials, and if you take them out of it, if we do a merit pool, it's gonna be even less, so.
Right.
We can do all merit, now we don't have to worry about giving everybody a raise, take care of the people. Just throwing it out there.
Those are things that still need to be discussed.
What, um, so Jeff's looking at the total budget, what, what's, uh, I mean, obviously, we got reserves that we didn't want to hold, I mean, but what are we looking to spend? Is that, what are our total expenditures for 18?
So you wanna look mainly at total expenditures, the 51,762.30.
Okay, 'cause that's, that's truly what we're working on with our budget, is $51 million. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for now, we'll get to having fun later on.
When will this be out on the website, or will it not be?
Um, in the past, we haven't put the proposed out there.
Okay, that's fine. No, that's fine, we've just done the final. Right, okay.
Okay.
It'll be in the newspaper tomorrow.
Does everybody have access to this electronically, though? I mean, or does everybody get a?
Everyone will get a printed book.
Okay.
If you request, we can send you an electronic copy of it. And we can put it on the website, it's just, we have it in the past, tried to confuse people with the proposed versus the final.
I don't think we need to put it out there.
Uh, that's good.
And it's in BSNA, too. As far as anybody, any departments here can look at, too.
Their individual budget or the total budget?
Their individual budget or the total budget? How am I going to go in and change other people's budgets on this?
And all the levels are currently locked, so you can't go in and make any changes.
Okay.
Whatever you do to theirs, you do to yours. So, if you feel it's a fair cut for both of y'all, then.
I believe it's that.
Okay. Me, too. Let's do it. Just put the changes in red so we can see what was going. It's like beating somebody half to death. They get double what you get, or how'd that work? Never mind. We don't go to that joke.
Okay. We did the change order, so...
I think we're done.
Do we have any other issues we want to discuss before we go into closed session?
We have closed session again? What are we doing all the time? It's on there every week.
They're serious times.
We used to not have closed session like ever. The good old days.
All right.
I don't think, well, I mentioned that we got the planning commission meeting tonight, and I'm just going to run that by you again, Chris, if you've got anybody in mind for Dick Pearson's position. I don't mean to hound you, but it's going to come up quick. And it is hard to find volunteers to do that stuff. It's not very well paid. But they get to have time with us, so.
And does that need to come from a certain township? Is that what you told me?
Yeah. I'll get with Shannon tonight and find out for sure which township that is.
I don't remember that on there.
Marion.
Is it Marion?
I think.
Yeah. I guess he is over there farther than I thought.
Does that township come into Jefferson City yet? Does it stay out?
I don't know. I mean, regardless, it can't be somebody from inside of incorporated area.
No, it can't.
So, that's what, county, you run into trouble. You've got plenty of people that'll do it if you asked them. And a lot of times, they live inside of the city's limits.
I see.
So, because we got ran into that with, like, Wardsville, Towson, you know, St. Thomas, even, that there's people willing to do it, but they weren't outside the incorporated areas. We can get the clerks office to print off an actual list of all the registered voters that are outside of the city limits, too, and kind of go through it and see what you got. Then, I don't know if you want to talk to any other, like, West Side Business Association, if, I mean, if you're a member of that, or see if they got anybody that'd like to recommend their home builders, or one of their groups that you want to involve. I think that's it.
That's the planning commission?
Yeah. Tuesday, 3rd, Tuesday, no, 2nd, 2nd Tuesday, 5:15 meetings. Sometimes last 15 minutes. Sometimes we don't have meetings. Working on getting no meetings during deer season, but Shannon's not been playing very nice with us.
Well, I know. I mean, got a road and bridge meeting during deer season, too. We didn't think that one out very good either.
Association of Counties Conference.
Yeah.
Who does that?
No idea.
We can make it a county holiday.
Yeah, we're looking, we're looking at some additional dates.
Wait a minute. Watch his joking, Sam.
Oh.
I'll go get the quarter.
Your birthday's not going to be one of them. You got to be dead first. So, it's not really going to help you.
I've been feeling kind of peaked lately.
Go get some of your serum.
Anything else before we go into closed session?
Not for the good of the order.
Not for the good of the order.
All right, let's do it.
All right. Maybe we go into closed session pursuant to section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri for personnel issues, sub 3.
Second.
Sub 3, is that right?
I don't know. No one's really consulted with that, Chris. It might be 13 for all, I know.
Roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.